Welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twelve regular board meetings. Please stand with me for the flag. This is the president's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, man, clerk.
Barcar?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Stockton?
Yes, here.
Povey?
Yes, I'm here.
Bring this over to public and agenda items only. If you have any questions or statement about what's on the agenda, come up right now. I'll give you name, your address, and I'll give you three minutes to say what you need to say. Okay, there's no takers. Entertained a motion to accept a consent agenda as is.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, there was a move in a second that we, there needs to be a correction.
Under discussion, yes.
Under discussion.
I'm aware of your name, sir.
Thank you.
Jay, who seconded?
I did.
Thank you.
No discussion.
Yes, under discussion, um, you will note in the packet that there is a, on your bill payment list, there is a check to East Jordan Iron Works in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars. That was a, made out to East Jordan in error. The amount was correct, twelve thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars. That should be made out to East Com, and that check to East Jordan is voided out. Just a mistake.
It's just information.
Yep.
Okay, roll call, please.
Barcar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, she carries. Clerk, is there anything from your office?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Minister, we have a few things to do.
Yes, sir. Item F-one on the, on my agenda, Mr. Mayor, is a redevelopment agreement to TIF payout request from Graylar Corporation. The amount of the TIF reimbursement is fifteen thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. This is derived from taxes that are paid in checking. All taxes have been paid, property taxes have been paid, and the TIF reimbursement is proper in accordance with the agreement with Graylar Corporation.
That's in form of a motion. So moved. Sorry. Roll call, please.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Next, item F-two on my agenda is, has to do with Frankie's Touch of Italy. As part of our water main reconstruction project with Briar Lane, an amount of twenty-two hundred, twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents was included in our contract for restoration. And in an effort to work with the, with the local businesses, in particular Frankie's Touch of Italy, he was going to redo his parking lot, and rather than have a scene where his parking lot was redone and our restoration took place, Engineer McKenna engineered this deal, if you will pardon the expression, that once the parking lot was totally paved, and they, they also paved our restoration part, that we would forward that amount to Frankie's Touch of Italy. The parking lot has been completed, it has been striked and inspected, and therefore requesting a check to be authorized for twenty-two, twenty-seven point one six to Frankie's Touch of Italy.
And that's in a form of a motion. So moved. Sorry. Roll call, please.
Horn?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McKenna, for having that done, helped out ourselves and the local business. Item F-three on the agenda is a resolution approving the development agreement for NSRD investments. If you recall, at the last board meeting, we did, this board did pass the development agreement. However, due to my error, I inadvertently left off the, the resolution which authorizes that agreement, and therefore you have that before you this evening.
Resolution number?
Twenty-twelve dash six.
That's in the form of a motion. So moved. Roll call, please.
I need a second.
I'm sorry. That will take roll call.
Horn?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item number F-five is a house cleaning matter having to do with letter of credit funds for Derby Meadows infrastructure completion. I believe it was at the last board meeting I explained what was taking place with Derby Meadows. It was an incomplete subdivision in which the village was able to secure some, some funds for the completion of that subdivision through exercising the, calling a letter of credit, which was placed against that project. What this does is we're requesting the expenditure of those funds not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. That is the amount that appears in our, in our budget for expenditure on Derby Meadows, and the work is underway as we speak. It's merely a reaffirmation of expending those funds for the infrastructure improvements.
That's in form of a motion. So moved. Second. Roll call, please.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item F-six on my agenda represents a joint resolution for a locally controlled airport This was the resolution that was discussed at the special meeting of November fifth, two thousand and twelve. It has to do simply with the, with the control of an airport should an airport be built in Eastern Will County here. Our goal is with the, with the four Iron Ring communities which make up, which are made up of Moni, Crete, Beecher, and Piattone, our concern locally is that if an airport is, is built at some point in the future, it's imperative that we have a say, local control say, in that operation of that airport so that we can provide the best representation to the constituents. I'm happy to answer any further questions, should there be one.
Resolution number, please.
Two thousand and twelve dash seven.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had someone to bring to my attention tonight, I don't know the answer to this, but we've got the four villages, so how many villages there? Is there any provision, or how would you foresee this happening whereas, let's say for instance, Will Township as an example, was right in the heart of that. I don't know if it's frankly going to be a whole lot left of the township itself, I mean functionally, in the event you get the Eliana third airport and all that kind of stuff, that all that sort of comes into fruition. But is there any provision at all, or do you think that there's any way that, let's say the supervisor from Will Township or something like that could also be a part of that participation?
There is a way for that to happen in the, in the airport authority bill that is proposed. We, the Iron Ring communities, put forth a nine-member board, of which the Will County has an appointment to that board, and it very well could be township supervisor, you know, anything of that nature, as well as the governor has appointment to that board. What we have done is put forth our idea, the Iron Rings idea of, of regional consensus for control of a third airport should it be built. That's not to say that the nine-member board will be accepted, but that is our idea. And because the Iron Ring community stuck together and, and had a level-headed approach to this about the control of, of an airport should it be built, it's the reason that we're here today, being able to continue to speak to it, and that outside influences or outside organizations have not overshadowed us. And by, by that, I mean, there's other plans out there, you know, there's the Al-Nak plan and, and everything, none of which brings local control to the local municipalities here. So, in the short answer, yes, there is a way that that could happen, and, you know, that could either be through, like I said, through the Will County Executive, or governor's appointment, or there may even be, you know, some, some change in the number of board members. But this is our proposal as we move forward.
And one last question, if I may. Could you explain the sense of urgency or relevance to it being restated again? I mean, because it's, some of this has been stated in the past, but we're bringing it up again because, is this going on Springfield this time, or?
Um, yes, there's the, we hope to bring, we've been working very closely with Senator Toy Hutchinson, and, you know, she's hoping to move the bills that exist, to amend those bills, because we've also provided some feedback on, on some amendments to those bills, but she's hoping to move that forward in the veto session, and her, the best way in order to do that will be to have it as a joint resolution, so it shows the, the Iron Ring sticking together. That's the plan, however it shakes out, I don't know, but quite frankly, she has, she being Senator Hutchinson, has attended quite a few of our meetings and has supported local control.
So moved. That's in form of a motion. So moved. You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Barcar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Stockton?
Motion carries. Say, Mr. Wallace?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you can, I do have a few things that I would like to report. I know that there's been some discussion regarding, or some interest regarding the, regarding the completion of the KFC Taco Bell site with vinyl fence and so forth, that is moving forward. Hurricane Sandy has put a little bit of a damper on some of the supplies that, the fencing material was coming from that area, the vinyl fencing. They have since found a separate or a different alternative supplier, and that cut sheet was reviewed and given authority to proceed, so we should see that project come to fruition there very shortly. The next item that I had was, I'm sure that, I would like just to prepare the board a little bit that as we approach the budgeting season, if you will, in setting tax levies in our budget for next fiscal year, I've attended our SWARM meeting, which covers our property casualty liability and, and workers' compensation, and there are some significant increases that will, that will come through in this hard insurance market. Roughly ten percent on the liability and property casualty, and thirty percent increase with, with workers' compensation. When you bounce that off the pool, if you will, we will, we will fare out pretty good with probably in the neighborhood of an overall increase to the, the village of Moni in the, maybe four to six percent range overall, because there are some monies existing in the pool that will help, help offset some of those increases. So, this is one time that participating, participating in a pool approach actually helps us out a little bit. That really is just for information. Additionally, our, uh, warning sirens will be narrow-banded during the week of November nineteenth through the twenty-first. That's, these are just some things that are going on behind the scenes, and really the, you know, officials and everyone ought to know about that. Last, or close to last, second to last, is electrical aggregation. I suspect that many people are getting bombarded with phone calls regarding electrical aggregation. Moni has moved ahead with that in the, with the opt-in program. The, the understanding memorandum of understanding between First Energy and, and the village has been signed and given back with a pricing of five point four eight cents per kilowatt hour. So, you should very soon, I'm going to guess within the next couple of weeks, start to receive mail that will have the village logo and/or from the village of Moni on that, which would be the start of the opt-in program. And last but not least, some additional good news is that through the, um, transportation and the, and the high-growth cities appropriation that the, the governor and Illinois Department of Transportation put forth, we've received an additional amount of eighty-seven hundred and twenty-three dollars of motor fuel tax distribution. So that was put into the motor fuel tax account. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Very good. I've got a question, please.
Yes.
Okay, you say that with the, with the new rate, that we're, can you give the idea of what the, what the old rate was, basically?
Electric, check your comment bill right now, and you can, you'll have the rate per kilowatt hour, and the new rate is five point four eight cents per kilowatt hour. Okay? That rate has not changed yet on your comment bill, but it will, if you opt into the program. And I guess, Mr. Mayor, that is something that we need to make clear, this is not automatic. If you want to take advantage of that lower rate, you must opt in. And if you fail to receive anything, any notification bearing the village's logo or address on it, it's, either they forgot you, and we can certainly supply customer service number, or you are already receiving a, your electrical supply from a third-party vendor, not Commonwealth Edison. Letters will only go out to those who receive their power from Commonwealth Edison.
Thank you.
Mr. Minister?
Yes.
Is there any way that you, we can put a note on there, there's a very small area on the water belts, is there any way that we can also put a note on there for the next cycle for that, or is that going to be, be passed our?
It, it might be past that.
Okay.
It might be past it, but that's a good point if, if, if the, if the timing works out right, most certainly we can put that on there.
Mr. Wallace, I have a question. If you're in something now, you're not going to receive a letter.
You will not.
So people that are in it, I know there's many out there, they should call and app out if they can do that.
Well, that, that is their choice.
If they do that, will they then get a letter? Will the village be aware of that somehow? How would they get a letter?
Yeah, what they, if they're interested, if they're now receiving their electric supply from a third-party supplier, and they wish to opt out, and they have any questions regarding that, really you need to consider what the rate is you have versus the rate that's being offered. Are there any cancellation fees that would offset, you know, any savings? And then number three is, we will supply the customer service number for First Energy so that you, before you opt out, you can call First Energy, get all the information that you need, they can answer any questions that, you know, if you opt out, you know, the village really isn't involved in that, we're, we're just, we're just kind of.
Okay, so the consumer that's in something now has to be the one that.
There, yes, there, yes, the consumer is, is and will remain in total control of their accounts.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, brings us to the mayor's agenda, I have one action item. Look, I have entertained a motion to cancel a November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve board meeting due to Thanksgiving holiday. That's in form of a motion. I'll make that motion. Second. Discussion?
Yes.
My only concern on that is, I, I get the holidays and so forth, my only concern is that we go a month without doing the village's business. So I guess my point is, what, at what point, if we have a, a chief load of, of things to, to work on, what point do we call the board into a session to, to work through some of the things that may be building up?
If there was an emergency of any kind, we can always call a special meeting on any given date with proper notification. If there's not, normally, obviously, you always got something that can happen, nothing does happen, but if it does, we call and receive it. Roll call, please.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes. Motion carries. That's all I have, brings us to engineers report. Do we have an engineering room to add something?
From, from our side, we have nothing to report on at this time. Mr. McKenna, if you have anything to report on Route Fifty at all, any status, little update, that would be fine, as long as you're here.
Okay. Well, two items we're working on, one was water main replacement, that's all they completed, and we're trying to work through change order, change order items with contractor, also need to walk the site, verify and make sure that they've completed everything as far as restoration and everything else, so that.
Excuse me, can you pull that a little closer to you, gentlemen?
A little bit.
Yeah, let everybody know you're at Fire's Worth, so you can never talk about this.
Push the podium forward. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So they should be completing that here in the next few weeks, just doing some restoration work on the water main stuff, and then come December, we'll bring it forward to the board as far as finalizing that, that contract and getting that closed out. Other project we're assisting with is the Route Fifty project, you're seeing that's starting to get completed. They do have some additional restoration items, they're finishing up some sidewalk through driveways, and they'll be replacing the aprons on those driveways. The signals are all installed, and startup of that is supposed to happen by the end of the month. So that is scheduled with I dot state comes out and actually starts up the new signals, which like I said, they're, they're planning to do that in the next couple of weeks, see those turn on, and their goal is to have everything completed here by the summer. So, as we're getting close to that here, I'll also walk with the village to find out if there's any deficiency items that we may see on the village's property and such that need to be addressed, and get those closed out and worked out with the state. So, that's about it. Any questions?
Mr. Richmond, I got a question for you. I've had some residents ask me because they've observed, I think I know the answer to this, but I think the public is a little concerned about this, is the fact that there has been what appears to be work, undoing the work, and redoing the work in a number of situations along Route Fifty. And, can you just say why that?
Sure, absolutely. They, the federal government has, it seems, especially this year, has had a high concentration on ADA compliance with, in particular sidewalks, pedestrian access, that they have really honed down on the states and everybody else. So, part of the problem with this project was the fact that the design of this was done several years ago, and there's been substantial changes to ADA compliance and requirements and everything else. So as it went from design into construction, a lot of those issues didn't quite get resolved. So some things were being built to, you know, lands that were developed in the past, and some of those requirements weren't quite being met. So with that, they were required to go back and make the adjustments to make sure it was in compliance. About, I think eighty to ninety percent of the project is actually paid with federal government money. So, they did come out to the site to double-check some things with the state and verify some of those items, and that's, that's what a lot of the sidewalk removal replacements about, it's just, it's not quite meet the appropriate grades and pass them to meet the ADA compliance, so.
Does that also pertain to the removal of the asphalt to put the concrete in and in place in some places?
A lot of that was adjustments typically, which we like to see when they do adjustments on the frames that are out in the street, to get proper compaction when they're putting down the asphalt, they like to steel plate over top of those, what they do is they dig them out before they do the final lift of pavement, they get those adjusted properly, and they pour concrete around them to hold those in place. So that's kind of the standard construction item.
I was talking about like the approaches, you know, where like the sidewalks were crossing driveways and things of that sort, it looked like they were actually pulling asphalt out of those, is that what you're referring to?
There's, there were some adjustments in the asphalt, are you talking about the driveways?
Um, yeah, like the carcals and Frank U's.
Deeper, this is what they are.
Correct. Ten, ten to fifteen years ago, the standard was to have asphalt pavement throughout the driveway entirely, and it would be a break in sidewalk, and that was one of the kind of glitches in the design that was done long ago, that's, that's the standard of doing it. Whereas now, most road projects that are done, the sidewalks go through everything to give the pedestrians a right way. So that was some, that was something that the state and feds kind of got together, the feds were requiring the sidewalk to go all the way through the driveways, state was claiming that, that was not in original design, and the feds required them to do that, so. That's why you're seeing those driveways now get torn out, sidewalk put in, and then they will drop back and redo the asphalt to meet the proper grades and everything, so.
I'm rich, will you and Oliver Department heads and sit out there keeping an eye on to make sure the radio is getting through?
They've had, just the last change order authorizations, I've seen over a million hours in change orders in that project, so there are a lot of things that were overlooked, you know, then, the fact that you see these projects that get put down and delayed for so long, there are a lot of things that kind of get missed, or changes that get made in the town development and other things that don't necessarily get updated on the state's side that caused a lot of those changes, so it's, we had a good time. Thank you.
I want to personally, Joe, thank you for your diligence, because a lot of people in the community don't know how many hundreds, thousands of dollars you've found, you're working with the state and the feds, that we had ate out of our own budget. And being out there with Fire's Worth has been a very important thing, and once again for the whole community, thank you, and thank you for Fire's Worth.
You're welcome. Anything else?
This is your attorney's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one item for the board's review and consideration. It's the ordinance imposing a license fee upon video gaming terminal distributors within the village of Moni. Basically, what this ordinance does is, we talked about, we believe on the previous occasion, we will set a two hundred dollar annual license fee to be paid to the village by the terminal operator for each video gaming terminal located in a licensed location. Said fees are non-defundable. It's up for the board's review and consideration.
Orin's number, please.
Sixteen twenty-three.
So moved. Let's for a second. Second. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
orders in that project, so there were a lot of things that were overlooked, you know, then the fact that you see these projects that get put down and delayed for so long, there are a lot of things that kind of get missed, or changes that get made in the town development and other things that don't necessarily get updated on the state's side that caused a lot of those changes, so it's, we had a good time. Thank you.
I want to personally, Joe, thank you for your diligence, because a lot of people in the community don't know how many hundreds, thousands of dollars you've found, you're working with the state and the feds, that we've had eight out of our own budget. And being out there with Farnsworth has been a very important thing here. Once again, for the whole community, thank you, and thank you for Farnsworth.
Anything else?
This is the attorney's report.
Thank you, your honor. I have one item for the board's review and consideration. It's the ordinance imposing a license fee upon video gaming terminal distributors within the Village of Monique. Basically, what this ordinance does is, we talked about, we believe in the previous occasion, we would set a two hundred dollar annual license fee to be paid to the village by the terminal operator for each video gaming terminal located in a licensed location. Said fees are non-defundable. It's up for the board's review and consideration.
Ordinance number, please.
Sixteen twenty-three.
Looks for a second. Discussion?
Yes, sir. Most of you know the board, well, I know the board knows this, maybe the public doesn't, but I've been an opponent of this video gaming since it came up a few months ago. The, the license fee, I guess this is in form of a statement perhaps, the licensing fee, we, I know we discussed this and went around and get different numbers bandied about last month when we talked about this. The fact that this gaming, this license fee is not paid for by the facility in town, the tavern in town, or the restaurant in town, but it's paid for by Access Entertainment, which I guess is the ones that, that supply these machines. I would like us to see this voted down and a license fee of at least doubled or tripled here, because then that money can be used, as we had talked about, we talked about a lot of things, that money could be used for, um, for use for charities or, um, different, I guess charities in need. I know we'd have to write in the ordinance, adjust the ordinance for that.
One item, let's get it all out, Mr. Warren first.
Thank you. Anyway, so I know we've been through that, but I would urge us to vote this down and replace it with a higher licensing fee.
Mr. Mayor, this has been from committee three times, it's been on the board twice. At the last board meeting, we discussed this. I asked the attorney of what these fees, the licensing fees can be used for, and the attorney stated to the whole board that these fees can only be used for the general revenue, and it couldn't be used for any kind of, of money towards charities or anything like that. If the board wished to set up a ordinance for charities, that's a whole different, that's a whole different item for, for different payouts for different charities. But the money that comes from the licensed ordinance, this has to go into the general fund. Am I right, sir?
It should go into the general corporate fund. And then the board can determine, but it's hard to set up a land, can we put it in the general corporate?
We have a motion on the floor.
I'd like to...
We got a second?
...discuss it too, if I may.
Yes, sir.
In committee, we, we looked at the different costs other villages and communities were charging, and, and there were two that were exorbitant compared to the others. It ranged from zero dollars to a thousand dollars, and it was one at a thousand, one at eight hundred. The majority of them were zero and twenty-five dollars. I think there might even have a hundred dollar one there. So we do do some probing by trustee Horn at Farnsworth, he wanted to see an increase in it, and we did increase that, and we are way above ground field. Those communities are charging, so I have no problem with this amount whatsoever.
Well, let's take a vote on this and put it to bed one way or the other. We've already had this open conversation, exactly the same here in committee, so...
If I can just throw a point of discussion in there. I don't disagree with what trustee Horn's saying, but agree with trustee Stockton, it has been addressed and it was sent to the attorney to lay out more. As much as I agree that there's reasonable consideration for, as you and I even discussed, that there is some possible consideration there for doing something good with that situation, I talked to one of our senators downstate, and they indicated they thought that it could be put aside to a particular venue of sorts, but that's not the point right now. I think the fact that we've got it, we've reached a general consensus, I'm, I would like to see it higher as well, but I, I don't know that there's those next year.
Roll call, please.
Warren?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else, constable?
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to our committee reports. Start out trustee Stockton with finance.
I have one action item. I want to defer this to the, to the mayor, because he normally sets the amount for this. This is a Toys for Tots for the Village of Monique, so if you want to fill the people in.
Well, in the past, the village, as always, keep up and kindly sell for five hundred dollars to help out, to give the bigger total of the toys that we can raise. Myself and the clerk, we take that five hundred dollars, we go to either Walmart or one of the stores, you can pick up some stores, toys for five bucks a piece or whatever, so you can reach out to more kids. But that's where that five hundred dollars goes, to Toys for Tots. Last year, matter of fact, all of the Toys for Tots were handed to the township over here. By the time we got out to the Marine Corps, and Joe, yeah, we called them, they were already shipped out. Just out of curiosity, I said, well, where do you, where do you ship them to? He said, Mooney Township. I said, oh, that's good, we'll just take them right over there. So we took them over, and it was perfect timing because they were out of noise. It made a lot of kids happy. So I've entertained a motion to spend five hundred dollars, what we have in the past, and to put it towards Toys for Tots.
Second. One second, then.
I need a first.
No. Second. I'll be the first. You're the first. Roll call, please.
Warren?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes.
Ray?
Motion carries. I'd like to add one more thing, trustee Stockton. I'm asking everybody, the public, if you get a chance, you get two or three bucks, get a little toy. We're gonna get our containers out here very soon. We also have a food container out here, and we, we make sure that food goes to people that are local. We keep it out of download because nobody wants to know their personal business, but if you could find in your hearts, people out in the community, a Candace or a Candad or a little toy, you're gonna, you make some people happy, and I appreciate that if you do. Trustee Stockton, anything else, sir?
So, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What was the deadline for getting the toys or food or...
We've taken them right up to Christmas Eve. We've had other outlets in the past. The clerk and myself, we've taken some toys, and we've added separately to the, what is it, the oncology treasure chest foundation for kids with cancer. We can always find a home for a toy if it's Christmas Eve, if it's the day after Christmas, we'll find a home or a church who will take that toy.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Brings us to number two on the list, trustee Horn with police.
Yeah, I just had one point of information for people. There have been some break-ins to outbuildings on Brunz Road and on Kirsten Road. Now, most of those are not in the village. I only know of one that was actually in the village limits, but these, and it's not, let me stress, it's not been into homes or anything like that, it's been into outbuildings. But there's been a series of them on Brunz Road, and I know at least one on Kirsten Road. So just to be aware of that, I know the police department and the, Will County sheriffs are working on that, so just be aware.
Trustee Horn, I may add on to that. I do believe these were unlawful entries, they weren't break-ins, no locks on the doors. So it's really a lesser crime per se, but it still is violating somebody's private space.
Thank you for that clarification, yes.
You're welcome, sir.
And just so people know, it's typically in larger properties like estates or whatever like that, and farm type thing, and if I understand correctly, people drive up on the grass instead of on the gravel, so that you won't hear them approaching. So that's an unfortunate situation.
Hello, trustee Gray.
Uh, just one thing, it seems like it was a while ago, but the Halloween hatlings went off very well for us. I also, again, like to thank the trustees, the mayor, the clerk, the deputy clerk, the kids that found here, and some of the employees that took their time behind a Saturday evening to come out, to make it go off very well. We had DJ out there, it was very good, it was very cold weather. We actually had the turnout, we had about thirty kids out there that night that seemed to have a very good time. Again, I'd just like to thank everybody for the help. It doesn't go off, I want first, it's, it's a group effort, and again, went off well. I appreciate everybody's help, and the public that did come out.
Trustee Gray, I do believe there was a hundred and, hundred and four kids rode to Hayraddy, so they really loved it, and that's a lot of kids on a cold night like that.
It was a very cold night, yes.
It's a job, no?
But I appreciate everybody's help, and we'll do it again next year.
Trustee Barcar, a public property.
A couple things. I know we had a discussion regarding the emerald ashbore and the effect of that. We had been up at all the municipalities, and I talked to a couple vendors up there. They had indicated that, of course, they were selling their remedies, that there are, there are cures, if you will, for their...
Guaranteed that?
Uh, no. And everyone that I've talked to, it's been other municipalities and such, they've indicated that the well-understood practice at this point is just to eliminate the worst of the trees that are affected, and the treatment option, yeah, there is a treatment option, but it's, by the time you get done paying for all the treatment and everything else, and there's no guarantee, and you don't know how long those ashbores are gonna be, you know, hovering around here, out in the woodland areas and things like that, they could come right back and you stop treatment for a year and a half. So I just wanted to bring that up, and also, I talked to the superintendent of public works, and apparently, the vendor we had lined up as a tentative stump removal vendor got blown over to the east coast to deal with Hurricane Sandy. So I'm not sure when they're gonna be returning, but ideally, we're gonna try to get some of the stuff ground down yet this year. Another issue that came to my attention was, I know we had this happen at a pond within the last year, where there had been some planks, whatever, that had blocked the outport, if you will, the overflow port, called, you know, the pond. You know, I first of all, wanna, wanna just make sure that everybody realizes how good of a job that Mr. Grisell's doing. Everybody had their day off, and I saw him out working, you know, I mean, he just, I don't know if he gets a break. But it was brought to my attention that one pond over there lives on the corbel. Somebody had shoved a bucket in one of the outports.
Can I make a correction on that?
Yeah.
I didn't know if they shoved it or if it flowed in there or not.
Well, likely, they're just latching in so perfectly. Okay, regardless, uh, there were no fingerprints, you know, or anything like that, so we just, we don't, you know...
But I don't want to come to conclusion and insult some neighbors that live around that pond.
It doesn't, it could have been a kid, it could have been anything, we don't know. But the point is, is that there are reasons why those outports are upset at a certain height, the elevation and everything else. You're gonna have problems potentially with erosion of the banks that weren't designed for the water to be at a different level, and I believe we had to run a pump well over twenty-four hours or longer, twelve days, for call?
Three days.
Three days we had to run a, an ejector pump to get rid of the water, just to get it down low enough to remove the bucket. That's a waste of village resources, and if anybody sees anybody out there thinking they're gonna have fun and raise their pond level for some reason because they think it needs to be deeper, they're not there for, as much as we enjoy them for the aesthetics and everything else, they're there for a reason. It has to regulate the water, not necessarily to deep feeds, deep sea fishing.
You know what I'm thinking, by the way.
Anyhow, so if anybody sees anybody out blocking a pond outlet, outport, please provide a maintenance call.
I think Mr. Grisell is looking for an iron grid to cover that culvert which is missing.
Right.
And that would solve that particular problem, and if the, the iron grid could have been, fell in the water, it's down in the mud, you know, it would have provoked one.
I think there's some that didn't have them at all. I know the one...
It's very possible. With the beaver issues and stuff, we need to get those in place.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Road to Bridge with trustee Pat.
Well, between Jase's comments to Joe, Mr. McKenna, and the mayor congratulating him and saying how pleased we are, I was gonna mention the same things, because he has saved the village many thousands, and so has our administration with our diligence up there. I can't say enough about the very fact that Joe mentioned a million dollars in extras, I'll be polite with the word, if I may, but I also want to report that Elder Lane and Briar Lane are completely done, so our two lanes within that construction area are now completed. We had to delay the one because it was involved in the tail end of the project, but that is completed now too. End of report.
If you also mind, I want to say there's brand-new water mains under those lanes.
Yes, there are. We did a lot of...
It's been there for a lot of years.
You did a lot of work.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Also included under your report is the approval of Route Fifty Project Amendment One.
Oh, I'm sorry. Read, read your, uh... This is, uh, looking for approval to come, fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the, because of all the extras, Farnsworth contract, if far exceeds what we're paying them, so they're asking for an additional fourteen thousand seven hundred, which I move we approve.
That's in form of a motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Pat? Barcar, second. Roll call.
Pat?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Pat?
Thank you, sir.
Comes to order with trustee Cranzur, she's at home not feeling well this evening, so I do believe Mr. Wallace has something he likes to cover.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to present this for trustee Cranzur. What you have before you is a, is an amendment, actually, amendment number two to the construction of the water mains that were done, that would be the Main Street, Briar Lane, and Elder Lane water main projects, and in an effort to complete that, that total walkthrough and, and review of change orders, Farnsworth has run out of time that was allocated on the original contract, and is requesting an additional eighty-eight hundred dollars to complete that project. And I would like to say that it's not to complete the project for what was already included in the original contract, it was to complete the extras that were incurred that, as an example, once we dug under Main Street at Elder Lane, there is a, a water main that, number one, was not deep enough, and number two, already had two patches on it, and they were going to pave a new road, so the time to do that was then, before they put the new road in, and it is items like that that needed to be handled and engineered kind of on the spot so that we could get it done before the Route Fifty project completed the paving. There's a list of about five change orders that go along with the water main project that need review by Farnsworth on our behalf, and that's really all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'd be looking for a motion to approve a water main project Amendment Number Two.
So, please. Second. Roll call, please.
Stockton?
Yes.
Barcar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Wallace?
That's all I have.
Okay, it brings us to economic development. All I can tell you is I'm working on something, but I can't apologize on working on it. Very attractive chicken and taco belt place out there in the pack pretty much, so we should be proud of that building. Brings us to unfinished business. I'm sorry? There will be a ribbon cutting Saturday at nine-thirty at Taco Belt. I think that's a formal grand opening. Thank you, madam, for the information. Okay, any new business?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
For a procedure. I've been doing this a long time, and I don't know exactly how to do this. What is the procedure if I need a resolution done? Is it, do I go through the administrator, do I contact the attorney to draw it up, or what?
I would start out with the administrator, and I would contact the attorney or constable.
Soon as I get my marching orders from Mr. Wallace.
There you go. I may need to fill out this, uh, this, uh... Thank you, trustee Stockton.
So, yes, sir.
Let's see, any new business now? Open to public, non-agent items, come to the podium, please give a statement, limit to three minutes, and try to hear you, hear you out. to three minutes, and try to hear you, hear you out.
Good evening. My name is David Holston, I'm from Fifty-three Twenty-Six West Main, I'm going to wear two hats for a couple minutes. First hat is on behalf of the Moonee Cregory Foundation. I'm happy to report to the trustees, and to the mayor, to the administration, that we have had local material donated, and the roof is scheduled to go on starting tomorrow. Administrator Wallace, I tried to reach you today unsuccessfully, I apologize, I understand you were busy, but they are scheduled to start tomorrow, so we should have a new roof before the winter comes. We are meeting regularly, and we appreciate the village allowing us to use the facilities here. We meet every third, second Thursday of each month. We're moving out toward winterizing the facility, and I'll be asking Administrator Wallace if he'd put us on the agenda at a future meeting, so that we can discuss with the village some of the next steps, and I'll be working again with Administrator Wallace to put that together for that. So, we appreciate the support of the trustees, as well as the mayor, you, and the rest of the administration.
Thank you, sir.
The second hat I'm going to put on is a general manager for UTI, two-five-eight-five-oh, South Rizlin Avenue. Couple months ago, I believe three months ago, the village took a sound survey. Sound survey indicated there were no issues. We were hoping that this issue was dead, but it was put to committee. Haven't heard of any committee meetings. We are kind of concerned about economic development here, and as a citizen, as well as as a general manager, I'm concerned that the subject should be dead. We were told we violated nothing, nothing's wrong, but we're still waiting here for the village.
Okay. I agree with you. Honestly, I don't know how far we can carry that ball, but it's not our ball to carry it, Augur. I know it went to trustee Barcar, public property, but that's truly private property, and there would be an issue between you and the resident in a court of law, if they wanted to drag you in there, vice versa. I don't think we have a dog in front of race, but I don't know how to back out of this. Council, you could probably inform me of that.
You could have meetings to discuss the, the issues, and look at the results of the sound study, I believe. If you go as far as we go right now.
Administrator Wallace provided us with a copy of the sound study. We have worked with the village on numerous occasions responding to this particular situation for years. We've made a number of accommodations. There have been numerous studies, the last study indicated there were no violations. We'd like to move on with our business and not be, continue to be intimidated or continue to be bothered by this. If we violate something, we've been more than willing to step forward and help, both the property owner and the, the facility itself. But we think it's time to move on. Simple as that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? I close this. Open to the public part, and I don't believe we have anything to go to executive session with. Council?
Well, no, sir, I can say in the open, we did close on that property on Port Street last week, that we had a contract, I forget the exact address, but that deal has closed, there's no defending address.
Can I ask a question regarding, we're planning on removing that building as well as the property, was it, that you said the trailer, I guess it was, more immediately north of there?
It's my summer home.
I know that his evil's got it.
Yes, eventually we will, and we kind of financing the time and the opportunity.
Has there been any, you know, happened with vacant properties at this time, it's not dispossessed, anywhere there's vacant properties, has there been any provision for anybody going in to remove anything, copper, or anything else from any of those properties?
From my knowledge, it's already happened to that building, so it's...
To which?
To the two-story.
To the what?
Okay, and I believe that the building at this time is secure. The Lucy and Ricky trailer, there's nothing in there, they go to the window, there's nothing, it's gone.
That's fine. I, and the reason I ask, somebody thought that they, somebody, I'm asking because I want to be on the public record, that somebody had asked that they thought that there was somebody sanctioned from the village to go in there and remove the copper or something like that, and I just want to make sure that those, if there was, it wasn't.
That's all. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Initiate a motion to adjourn. So moved. Rock call, please.
Barcar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Back to you.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.